We're calling this meeting to order attendance. We'll do roll call.
President.
Here.
Here. Public comments closed session 3.1. Do we have any public comments?
We will adjourn to closed session.
There is no report. Four point four, consideration of public employee discipline, dismissal release of employees twenty-three dash twenty-four slash E dash zero zero one. And twenty-three dash twenty-four E dash. Yes, can you hear me better? Great, okay. And twenty-three, twenty-four E zero zero three, and twenty-three dash twenty-four slash E dash zero zero seven pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven. A motion was made by Mr. Adams and second by Mr. Buffalo with a five zero vote of the board approved the release. Of number twenty-three dash twenty-four slash E dash zero zero. We are two six attendance, roll call Patty.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here. Mr. Adams, can you lead us into allegiance?
Will you all please rise, raise your hand over your heart, face the flag and recite with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Eight point one, a general approval, get a motion?
So moved.
Discussion. Betty, you'll take the vote.
I approve.
Approve.
Aye.
Aye. We have no public comment. Ten point one, two, okay, eleven. Eleven point one is recognition of twenty-three, twenty-four Associated Student Organization leaders by Dr. Gilzim.
Okay, well, I'll stand on my tiptoes. It's not coming down. It's all right, I can stand on my tiptoes. Still standing on tiptoes, it's all right. So who you have coming in front of you has been an absolute pleasure, oh my goodness, thank you, to work with this group of students this year. Not only have they represented students at the campus level and on participatory governance, at the state level and at the national level in Washington DC. They have done enormous amount of activities on campus, including homecoming, Halloween, holiday parade, care packages right before Thanksgiving and finals, a Valentine's Day celebration, Black History Month movie, club rush where we have had more clubs than we've had in past years register, especially since COVID. And then Leadership Matters, an all-day event where they've learned more and more about their leadership and had opportunities to represent. They have had countless experiences. What I'd like to just take a moment because you're going to see these faces again, I'm going to start with our graduating and I'm going to have them go down the line. Our one and only graduate to introduce themselves and their majors, and in your case, you can say where you're going to be transferring.
My name is Colton Beardsley and I am the Senator of Social and Behavioral Sciences and my major is Political Science.
Do we have a school? Do we have a school?
Oh yeah, and I was accepted to both UCLA and UC Berkeley and I'll be making a decision within the coming months.
One of our law scholars.
Hi, I am Steve Benitez, the former, well, the transitioning ASO president and my major is Film, TV, and Electronics.
Hello, my name is Leslie Saldar. My position is Senator of Health and Public Safety and my major is Registered Nursing.
Hi, my name is Christine Sippen. I was the ASO treasurer and my major is Chemistry.
Hello, my name is David Jordan and my position is Senator of Roman Services and my major is Biology.
Hello, my name is John Koryaga and I am the Executive Director of Public Relations and my major is Psychology.
Hello, my name is Rita Darbunda and I'm the Senator of Language Arts and my major is Biology.
Hello, my name is Isabel and I was the Executive Director of Special Programs and my major is Registered Nursing.
Hello, my name is Leah Ramasori. I was the Senator of Math, Science, and Engineering and my major is Electrical Engineering.
Hi, my name, hi, my name is Renaylin Wilson and I was the Vice President of Club Affairs. Oh, my major is Political Science.
So I know the board wants to take a picture with you all, we all have your certificates so you can open them. I do want to let you know that you're going to see a lot of these faces other than Colton who is finally transferring and we have some others that will be joining them for the twenty-five, four, twenty-five school year. And we could not be more proud of how well they've, they've done our, represented our campus. So we've got lots more coming, you'll see it at the next board meeting, you'll see a budget that is pre-ropals as well as changes to their constitution that will come before the board next month.
Thank you Dean Zimmerman, thank you for the great advising that you did for this ASO, so thank you to you for the guidance. And to the outgoing ASO board, thank you for a wonderful work that you all did this year. The board will be, this board will be coming by shaking hands and each of them will have two pins and they can, there's ten of you, five of them, even an English major can do that math, okay? So they'll give you a pin, we'll shake hands, and then we're going to take a picture with all of you.
And actually, Mr. Guzman is ready to take a picture if you all want to do a pic, one picture now and then once the board comes. If y'all can just pose, he can see you in the back.
UCLA. Oh.
With Anthony. And the reason why, this is the first time that we can remember where our student trustee served two consecutive terms. And so Anthony, on behalf of all of your students who have voted for you for doing such a great time and joining them on many of their adventures, there is more to, more formal for the student trustee, but I want to thank you for how well you served our students as the trustee for this year and I know we'll do just as well next year.
All right.
Dr. Z, could I just say, thank you real quick, thank you Dr. Z, thank you so much.
Yes.
Anthony, let's step out front here as we do, even though Anthony has been serving this year as our student trustee, we will go ahead and once again take the oath of office. So, no Bible, I trust your word, sir. Okay. Repeat after me, I, Anthony Rivera, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend. Or and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you, Anthony. Congratulations and we look forward to another year of serving together. Thank you all so much. Let's give our ASO another hand. Thank you. We are now to thirteen point one, Facility Service Plan.
Good evening, President Zellet, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member. Tonight we're presenting an update.
Mr. Barr, please lift that up. It's not, it's very soft and, and, uh, having issues hearing. Sorry for interrupting, thank you.
No, problem at all. Getting again, uh, good evening, President Zellet, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member. Tonight we're presenting an update on our Facility Service Plan. The last Facility's master plan was completed pre-COVID in 2016. Gensler has been working with the district since early 2022 to help complete this plan and guide us so that we can prepare for, prepare and plan for the next ten years. With that, I'd like to introduce Deborah Shepley from Gensler to present the update.
Good evening. A pleasure to be here, uh, to be talking. Let me just turn this a little bit, can you hear me okay? Okay. It's a pleasure to be here again, uh, to talk to you about the future for Antelope Valley College and to talk about specifically your Facility Service Plan. I had the pleasure of working with you to develop your previous Facility's Master Plan and I'm honored to be here to be relooking at the campus, looking at everything that has changed because a few things have since 2016, to be rethinking and imagining the future of, for Antelope Valley College. So if you can go to the next slide. This is an outline of the, uh, the brief presentation that I have for you tonight, beginning with a little bit about the process and the timeline. And then we'll talk about the planning framework, such an essential part of this Facility Service Plan. And from that, I'll share with you the draft recommendations. Next steps. So in the next slide, what you'll see is the process and the timeline. We've been following a five-step planning process. As mentioned, this, this process began in twenty, twenty, twenty-two and then twenty-twenty-three. Thank you. And then in earnest, we started working, uh, in this spring semester, moving through this five-step process. Began with step one where we prepared, we got organized, we mapped out the schedule and the timeline, decided who, uh, to be involved in the process and when and how. And then we analyzed extensive information, a lot of qualitative and quantitative, to create an integrated and comprehensive framework for planning, which I'll explain in detail. From that, we started applying the framework to be exploring options and thinking about the future. And that informed, um, is informing step five where we're developing the recommendations. We're at the very start of step five, so we have draft recommendations to share with you today and they will continue to be developed over the next three months and then shared with the broader campus community in August at convocation during a flex day presentation. And then will be brought back to you in September for approval. The group we've been working with on a most closely, uh, most closely is a committee called the Facility Service Plan Subcommittee. We've been meeting with them regularly. But in addition, we've been engaged with your broad campus community through online surveys and in-person campus forums. So you can see where we are in the planning process with the dotted box around today's date. So the planning framework, a very essential part of this Facility Service Plan, uh, most importantly, I want to emphasize that this planning process and the framework is integrated because the foundational planning documents that inform this Facility Service Plan are your educational service plan and your strategic plan. And your twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-nine strategic plan goals absolutely informed all the conversations we had and throughout the planning process. The process is very participatory, as mentioned. This is the, the highlights from the forum that we conducted in March and there were twen- one hundred and twenty participants had joined us to share their voice and their ideas and their perspectives. But we also provided an online campus survey to give people choices and options of how to engage and over three hundred and fifty responses and forty-four percent of them were students, which was wonderful, so it was an opportunity to really amplify voices in this planning process. So I'll share with you some of the things we've, we've found and it's a mix as of qualitative and quantitative. And some of the questions we asked, this was a fun board that we had. It said one word to describe ABC's campus. We first asked to describe ABC today. And these are the words that we heard. The ones on the left in the green, people thought ABC's campus is calm and friendly and helpful and chill. And then some of the comments on the right, some people, based on their experience, were experiencing the older part of the campuses or maybe crowded or maybe lonely. So really tapping into people's experiences for today. But then very importantly, thinking about the future. How would you like to describe ABC in the future, thinking as far as twenty thirty-five? And these are the words we heard. More students, brighter, lively, updated. There's some wonderful new updated parts of the campus, but not all of the campus. So these are some of the words, again, a variety of information to inform planning. We also asked about experiences in relation to where, uh, we asked where their people's favorite places on campus were and importantly, why. And you can see the green dots where this, where, where they, spots that they picked most. And some of the areas or buildings that were selected were U-Hazy Hall because it was stylish and there was food, people liked the subway. Um, and then the library, a different type of space, but the quiet and the sense of community. We also asked about least favorite spaces. And then we heard about some of more, that they were mostly on some of the older buildings. That noticeably they were older, they weren't as, uh, updated as some of the newer facilities. And so those were, again, different perception, diff- different, uh, experiences from your students. And then this is the last finding of the qualitative, this came from the survey. So with so much has changed and some of your instruction, so much instruction happening online in addition to in-person and then there's hybrid, that the purpose of the campus has, has continued to shift. So the question was, what's the primary reason that you want to come to campus? To make it brighter, more lively, more students as people want it. And all the orange answers, uh, the top on the left for students, well, you see the orange on the left for students, on the right for faculty. The orange have to do with collaboration. So for students, they're coming to work in person with instructors or to spend time collaborating with classmates. On the faculty side, similar collaboration, faculty wanting to come with students. It's great to see those right at the top or to collaborate with colleagues. So the purpose of the campus has shifted. Yes, there's a learning happening in addition to the learning in the classroom and the study in the library, but there's also that sense of community and collaboration, which is really important in thinking of the campus of the future. Also important to note on the student's side, the number two answer of why to come to campus is to have a quiet place to study, to be able to focus. So thinking about how to develop the campus to provide those different types of spaces to encourage people to be on campus more often. Then there was some physical data that we looked at as well. This is part of the data analysis. We looked at the age of your buildings. And on this plan, what you can see is the darkest brown color with the buildings that were constructed in the sixties and many of them still remain to the bright orange color. And those are the buil- the buildings that were constructed in the twenty twenties. So there's quite a difference sixty years between the oldest buildings and the newest. And that's part of what we heard about in the favorite, least favorite. And on top of this, there's another really important piece of data because in addition to age, very important to look at the condition. And not surprisingly, some of the oldest buildings are, have a dark color which indicates they're in high need of attention, either to be renovated or really looking at closely to see what makes most sense. Is it renovate, is it reconstruct? And really a focus area for this planning, uh, process. So many of the older buildings have been updated or replaced since the twenty sixteen Facilities Plan and this continues to look at that thread in terms of the buildings that still remain. So the planning framework, a very important part is to look at the campus today. So this, you can see all the existing buildings in white. You see the new Cedar Hall, which is in yellow under construction, but also the dark red buildings are all the temporary or portable buildings that are on campus. And in a long-range Facilities Plan, uh, we hope that there should not be temporary buildings on the plan, that all functions should move into a permanent building. This next plan then shows our starting point. We're showing the portable buildings dashed and we're showing the new buildings that are planned and will be happening soon, beginning with the Commons, which is in the center of campus. Next year, new Student Services Building that will be a wonderful draw to the middle of campus and really create, complete that campus heart and core to support your students. We're also showing in the west side of campus, the proposed location for your affordable student housing. So we want to be thinking of those and building out the framework for the future and knitting the campus together. And so to do that, we prepared, uh, we've created a framework to guide the conversations related to facilities planning. And so these five topics are the five topics that are focused on in this Facility Service Plan. The first topic is student service. And this Facility Service Plan and all ideas and recommendations will be to develop the physical environment to support students' needs, all students' needs. In doing so, to create equitable experiences so that in developing the spaces, both indoor and outdoor, to develop them to enhance a sense of belonging for all. And that's for students, staff, uh, faculty, administration, all, everyone here as part of the ABC community. To maximize resource, resources, so we have stewardship of resources, to make sure, looking at all resources, land, facilities, building, uh, energy, staff, very important in planning facilities. And next to also be carefully looking at efficiency and utilization. And not only have the right amount of space, to also make sure that space is being used wisely. And part of that is to create versatile spaces. And sometimes getting to the level of limiting single-use space, creating spaces that could serve multiple uses. And lastly, and very importantly, is to support in community engagement, to welcome and embrace the ABC community, both internal and external. So creating this framework that we developed with the Facility's Service Plan Subcommittee, we then started exploring ideas and options for the future. So these are the draft recommendations that I'll share with you in kind of a step-by-step in terms of how it was developed to build up to the recommendations. And again, they're draft at this point. And we started the conversations with the group where we brought a physical model and all the buildings, uh, were movable and we started moving and playing with them and having fun and thinking about, well, if we do this, then what do we do here and what do we do there? And how do we look at the campus comprehensively to, to envision this future for ABC? So on this plan, it's a little bit light, but all the yellow areas were the focus areas in thinking about this next long-term plan of the areas that need attention. And we're going to go through and highlight areas, um, one at a time. But before we do that, we also, um, highlighted an organizing framework. Now, this framework was developed as part of the twenty sixteen plan and it's still very strong. But the, the biggest difference here is a large east-west arrow that ex- now extends all the way out to the new housing. So we want to make sure to embrace the housing and make sure that area feels like an integrated part of the campus core. This zone of the campus is highlighting some of the outdoor athletic areas, Shore High School and Auto Lab. And one of the ideas, I'm going to show you a series of projects and they're not prioritized, but they do show linkages because one project leads to the next. And one of the first project that's recommended is to construct a new and permanent location for Shore High School. The place is currently on the existing tennis courts to the west of the existing gymnasium. It's adjacent to a drop-off in parking to allow for good vehicular flow. And it's suggested that it could be a courtyard building, create that type of environment that would be con- so conducive and work really well for Shore. What that allows is for the Auto Lab area, which is a building that needs attention to be renovated and also provides room for expansion for program needs. So the next area we looked at is the front of the campus, campus, the area immediately adjacent to this beautiful Performing Arts Center. So when the new Commons is constructed, your Student Center, most of the functions in the Student Center will move into the Commons, which means that location, it becomes available for another use. So the proposal, it's showing dashed here, is that will be removed, demolished. And in its place, a new Fine Arts Complex will be constructed. So it becomes constructed in a location that becomes available and it does not obstruct where the existing Fine Arts Complex is. So it gets built, everyone in the Fine Arts area moves into the new building and then the Fine Arts existing older buildings get removed and creates a location for a new community center. Now, this is part of your twenty sixteen plan and it's brought back in this plan and seen very important to enhance community engagement and also provide the needed event space and meeting room space. And the location is wonderful because between this building we're in, Performing Arts, Fine Arts and the Community Center, it places very public-facing facilities right at the front of your campus, welcoming the community in and engaging them in a beaut- in, in the ABC experience. The next will come to the campus core and there's several buildings in this area. But the first one to talk about is the existing gymnasium. So a lot of attention is needed for that facility. It's been looked at for years to be renovated and then even looked at even more closely of the cost to renovate versus the cost to replace. And in this proposal, in this Facility Service Plan, the proposal is to reconstruct the gymnasium into what will be a new physical education complex further to the west of the campus to create a comprehensive physical education kinesiology zone. Proposed tennis courts are, are proposed to be adjacent to it and it helps strengthen that east-west corridor, pedestrian corridor that reaches over towards housing. So it'll be also a wonderful asset for your students that live on campus and really extend, uh, and stretch the campus feel. Which frees up the existing location of where the gym is. Again, it gets constructed, it limits disruption and then the existing gym can be removed. And that becomes a proposed location for the new library. We did hear that many of your students love the library and it's wonderful. There's also a lot of work that needs to be done in that space to provide the type of library, uh, support and academic services, support services for your students. And so in proposed new location is, uh, recommended, that is now more in the center of campus. When the library was first constructed, it was the middle of the campus, the li- but the campus has grown to the north and to the west. So this new location is in the center. And so imagine from, um, thirtieth street, there's the Student Services Building and then the Student Union and then the library. His core campus support service programs right there, which frees up the middle of campus because after the new- which frees up the middle of campus because after the new library is constructed, the existing library will be demolished. And it becomes a location for the new Centennial Plaza. A newly developed quad, it's a beautiful, it's a space around the library, but becomes a larger space that can host a number of events and activities and really be a center of, a wonderful magnet of outdoor space for people to enjoy both your internal and external ABC community. And so here are the draft recommendations at this point that we're sharing today. And again, as I mentioned earlier, they will continue to be developed over the next few months. I would like to point out the property over to the west. We do have the areas dashed in, the newly acquired property identified as future development, without the particular answer of what that will be because there'll be further conversations and opportunities to explore. At this point, if there's any questions about any parts?
Are there any questions?
Or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
We now have a facilities update. We are at thirteen point two.
Good evening again, President Zellet, Board of Trustees, student board member. Tonight, my colleagues and I are presenting a facilities update, which will include an update on Measure AV, scheduled maintenance, and a departmental facilities update. I'll begin by giving an overview of the Measure AV program and budget. Actually, before I do that, let me start by introducing Noe Flores and Ron Benedetti, our two directors in facilities.
Give it up for Noe and Ron.
Please. These guys do, they do a tremendous amount of work. They're committed to the district. They do a great job every day. They really make us proud, and we're very happy to have them on the team. Beginning with Measure AV projects, shown here is the table of contents of tonight's presentation. And then moving on to completed projects. These are the projects that we've already, we've wrapped up, they're occupied, there's no outstanding payments. We've labeled them here as previously completed. They've been done for some time, occupied and in use. They include the Palmdale Center, Swing Space One, Campus Security, Sage Hall, and the Outdoor Fitness Center. Shown here are the dates that they were completed and the dollar amounts of those projects. Next, we have Discovery Lab. Discovery Labs, a 35,000 square foot technical education facility supporting welding, fire technology, electronics programs, and avionics. There are a few items remaining, but the grand opening was on May 12th of 2023, and the project was completed in August of 2023. Swing Space Two allowed for the demolition of existing spaces in Mesquite Hall, Yoshida Hall, FA Four, and included the T600 modular south of the tennis courts. The project was completed in July of 23. The Marauder Complex provided 22,000 square feet of usable space at the Marauder Stadium. It included team locker room, restrooms, training space, laundry equipment, meeting and office space. The project was also completed in August of 23. The Student Services Building provides 58,000 square feet for enrollment, counseling, financial aid, health, the Health Center, Veteran Services, and is the go-to spot for incoming students or incoming students and enrollment. Project was completed again in August of 23. Campus Wayfinding moved the main entry for the campus from Avenue K to 30th Street West and Avenue J-12. That was completed. That has been completed shortly after Student Services was completed. I want to say approximately August of 2023. I don't have the date here yet. There is still some signage left throughout the district to update. We plan on continuing to do that as we build out the remaining buildings. So that project, that piece of that project will continue. Infrastructure and PV relocation. It included various infrastructure and utility upgrades throughout campus. Work is continuing on repairing and replacing blue phones at this time throughout campus with this project. And now for our biggest project to date, Cedar Hall. It's a three-story, 65,000 square foot state-of-the-art building that'll house classrooms and faculty offices. It'll include a dedicated boardroom and an art gallery, as well as executive suites. Construction's on schedule, and the project is expected to be completed in March of '25. Completed and occupied in March of '25. And then looking forward, the Commons is a 47,000 square foot, single-story building, which will be the core for student life and college activities. It'll include a full kitchen and dining facilities and spaces for student groups. Bidding is expected to take place in June. It is out of DSA. We expect bidding to start next. Fencing should go up by August after construction starts. We expect the construction phase to be 24 months. And with that, that is all of the projects for Measure AV. Shown here is the Measure AV Budget and Expenditure Report. Of the 350 million, we have only 55 million now remaining that is uncommitted. Of that 55 million, 43 million is budgeted for the Commons. We expect to have enough funds in Measure AV to complete the Commons and to continue to meet our existing obligation. Moving on, we have our interest earning report. This is as of March 31st. We have 11.4 million in interest earnings for both Measure AV and the Endowment Invest. So we're in a good position here. These funds have to be used in alignment with Measure AV standards. And so we very much plan to do that. If there are any unforeseen expenses associated with any of our existing projects, these funds are here to support those as well. And with that now, I want to turn it over to my colleagues. And thank you, Noe and Ron.
In addition to major capital projects, Facility Services continues to serve our campus community. We're keeping our campuses clean and upkeeping our buildings through scheduled and preventative maintenance projects. Together, Facility Services is comprised of 61 full-time employees and 20 part-time employees, consisting of three support staff, 16 skilled maintenance workers and tradesmen, 25 custodial staff, 13 ground staff, and four motor pool staff. Together, Together, our grounds department maintained our 135-acre campus and irrigation systems. Custodial staff maintained and cleaned our 528,876 assignable square feet. Motor pool maintained our 21 district vehicles and over 100 utility carts and equipment. And our maintenance department serviced 4,646 work orders, an increase of 6.44% from the year before. Facilities is also beginning an initiative to provide further exposure to our work order system. Through this, we will begin placing flyers campus-wide and hold monthly trainings to end users on how to utilize our work order system efficiently. In addition to day-to-day operations, Facilities worked on several scheduled maintenance projects to keep our buildings up and running. These projects include condenser tube repairs, which repaired condenser tubes at our North Central Plant, door access control upgrades, which upgraded door softwares and added door security to our campus, irrigation upgrades, which made repairs and upgrades to our camp's irrigation system, library and CDC roof repairs pictured here, which replaced dated leaking roofs on the CDC and libraries. Library Mesquite Hall elevator upgrades, upgraded and modernized the elevators, library Mesquite Hall. You have an FA Quadic here upgrades, which made repairs to passive travel, replacing decomposed granite and concrete repairs, and fire alarm upgrades, which made repairs to campus fire alarm system.
How's everybody doing? As you can see, we changed, we added flagpoles in front of SSV for the California flag and one that will rotate so that when we have special events out there, we can put different flags up for those events. In addition to that, we added concrete along the south side over there to better facilitate travel, foot travel and vehicular travel through those areas. In addition to the flagpoles, we also put a new time capsule area in there in preparation for our centennial. In addition to the flagpoles, we have done more than flagpoles. Some of the major stuff that we're doing is the access controls upgrades. There you go. Access control upgrade, the gym and the FA Quad roof repairs. From the, when we had our major storm, we found those. We had the elevator upgrades at Yoshida Hall and that we're in the process of doing right now. We're in the process of doing a fire alarm upgrade throughout campus. We're removing all the asbestos and lead from the gymnasium. We're going to repaint and put new carpet in Child Development Center. And we are in the middle of replacing our VFDs, which are variable frequency drives for our HVAC equipment. Another thing that we've been able to accomplish as a department was back in August when we had a major storm that took out one of our buildings. Our personnel joined together, and in two days, we were able to move everybody and have them back up and running to full capacity. It was a very, very difficult thing to do. But between the custodial, grounds, maintenance, and IT department, we all pulled together and we got everybody up and running. And then later on, we got everybody back into the building again. So there are things that go unnoticed that shouldn't.
Well, we definitely thank you for that.
Any questions or comments?
And the semester before, we had the earthquake incident over in the admin building. We also had some on-the-hurry relocations of people out of the hub into other spaces as well. So in addition to all the fabulous work that Noe and Ron have described and Shami's described, there's these emergencies that happen just because emergencies happen, and they respond quickly and cooperatively, and they smile while they do it. So I deeply, deeply appreciate the can-do attitude that comes out of your department. And I appreciate all the classified professionals that work with you because it certainly doesn't happen on the backs of just a few people. So thank you all very much.
We're at thirteen point three, the Leadership Academy update.
As they're coming up, trustees, at the end of the presentation, we have some certificates that we will, that we can award to the participants. And so again, we'll do the group photo thing, and you can help pass out the certificates.
Okay, I was just waiting for everybody to get staged. Good evening, trustees. I'd like, it's my honor to introduce Harmony Miller, our Director of HR, as she and Rhonda Burgess, our Project Supervisor in HR, are the brains, the muscle, and the moving parts of our awesome Leadership Academy.
Good evening, President Zellet, trustees and student trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to present about the ABC Leadership Academy. The Leadership Academy began in 2019 as a year-long leadership development program that brought together individuals from all groups and allowed the college to grow future leaders. Participants in the academy gain essential core understanding of ABC operations while improving their individual knowledge, skills, and abilities as a leader. They increase their networking in the workplace and learn about planning, ethics, and challenges, leading change, advocacy, internal and external partnerships, communication, and teamwork. ABC has been fortunate to reap the success of growing our own through the academy as many alumni participants have ascended into leadership roles on campus. As background, the Leadership Academy for 2324 was made up of 16 participants. Four participants from each group, students, classified CMS, and faculty. The participants are put into groups with one from each constituency. The groups are tasked with producing a group project. They work through their ideas through research, planning, sourcing, logistics, costs, timeline, and steps to implementation, and ultimately, the benefit to ABC students. You will hear from participants tonight as they share their identified challenge in the student experience within the campus and offer a real-world solution. For 2324, there were nine sessions that included an alumni network and mentoring welcome, Real Colors training tours, speakers, including our own trustee Buffalo, Dr. McLennan, the Chancellor of Ventura Community College District, and members of administration. Since the inaugural year, we have made modifications and will continue to do so annually with input from participants at each of each program year. We have also had many of the presented group projects that have resulted in changes and modifications around the campus. And we have continued to provide a supportive environment for professional leadership growth. With that overview, I'm pleased to hand over the mic to Rhonda, who plays an instrumental role in Leadership Academy, making sure that all the details are working.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Harmony. I am honored to be introducing the groups this evening. They have put in countless hours on their presentations, and we are very hopeful to see many of their projects implemented this year. Each group is going to highlight their project. Our first group is consisting of Paloma Astorga, who is our classified representative. Phil Planelis is for CMS. Darren Waters is here for faculty, and unfortunately, our student Alexia Neary was unable to make it. And they are going to be talking on, their project is going to be on Shaded by Innovation: Solar-Powered Benches for Campus Life.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present our capstone proposal as part of the ABC Leadership Academy. As was already stated, my name's Darren Waters. I'm the EMT Program Director and Fire Technology Instructor.
I am Paloma Astorga, pronouncer she/her, and I am the Program Specialist for Outreach Services.
And I am Phil Planelis, the Supervisor of Custodial Services for Second Ship.
To present on our proposal, which as was already stated, Shaded by Innovation: Solar-Powered Benches for Campus Life. Now, our mission is to redesign and reimagine some of the more underutilized spaces here on campus, specifically for our students to have the ability, and more importantly, the opportunity to functionally gather outside for both academic and social ventures. So our plan essentially is to strategically implement what we're calling solar-powered workstation hubs at these strategic locations on campus. And these hubs are going to be a statement of sustainability, innovation, and accessibility. And it's going to be more than welcomed by the ABC campus and by the community of learned. So with that, we're going to go ahead and talk about a little bit on the cost, the benefit, and the features of our proposal.
Thank you. Paloma here again. So we identified three potential vendors that we could get one of these solar power charging workstations for students, as well as other campus community members to enjoy and do their work at. So one of the vendors was Sunbolt, and we looked specifically at their momentum model. The price per unit for the Sunbolt model is $15,450. And this is very wind resistant, as are the other ones. This is just one of the very many models that they have to offer, but this was a little bit more in the middle price range. We also saw Lumos Solar Zone Cafe as a potential vendor. Their price per unit is twelve thousand five hundred dollars, so a little bit less than the Sunbolt product. And then we found out about Blue Bolt Bench. They are a vendor that does offer these benches at no financial cost, zero dollars, but they are funded through ads. So ad revenue is what would fund this, but they are free to colleges and universities. The potential funding for these three different models would be trying to look into grant funding from different sources so that it could be no cost to the district. So that's how we would hope to move forward with this project.
Thank you very much for all of your time.
Thank you, team. Our next team is presenting on Title IX Awareness across ABC. Professor Freddie Avilas is unable to be with us today, but we do have Megan Bennett, who is our student. Pamela Ford is our Classified Representative and Kendra Ruff is our CMS Representative.
Hello and thank you for listening to us today. So as Ron introduced us, we are trying to start a sexual harassment awareness or Title IX Awareness Campaign that's geared towards students across campus. We understand that sexual harassment and sexual assault is not something that's really that fun to talk about. However, it's really necessary, especially with recent events that have occurred on the ABC campus. Additionally, we did run a survey in the initial kind of planning parts of this project across students at ABC and an overwhelming majority of students at ABC said that they did not feel ABC was doing a good enough awareness, or job at awareness for sexual harassment across campus. And a majority of them stated that if they were to experience sexual harassment or witness sexual harassment, they would not know the necessary steps that they need to take afterwards. Now, we know that sexual harassment and sexual assault is bad, but they definitely cause more lasting, long lasting effects to our students, not only with mental and physical results such as PTSD, but additionally with substance abuse behaviors and limits to their academic progress, limits on their testing, their grades in class and their graduation progress. We want to move forward and take steps that other universities have taken, such as Harvard, in which they focus on sexual harassment and sexual assault issues as an issue of public health and focus on social awareness and focus on active bystander awareness in place of just instituting policies and laws, which has shown, which has been shown to be ineffective. This is how we plan to do so.
Okay, so for Title IX Awareness and Ongoing Awareness, our team plans to promote the campaign by posting posters across campus, on the screens, news updates, social media, places that, you know, students free at a low cost to the district. We also wanted to provide students with the opportunity of attending workshops, events, online and in-person orientations regarding Title IX. We wanted to ensure that students are aware of Title IX and constantly reminded that ABC has a zero tolerance on any sexual misconduct.
So in order to maintain our Title IX recommendations and to make sure that this is an ongoing process, we want to have an ongoing improvement process. We'll interrogate our processes by using surveys because that's what identified that our students weren't aware of the information. We'll establish a peer buddy system and provide a prevention program and ongoing support for our students. We'll establish and maintain community support. We plan, a part of our plan is to set up a system to ensure currently enrolled students also receive the information because this is required for all incoming students, but our current students need the information as well. We also, as a part of our plan, plan to provide timely updates to Title IX as legal requirements change or are updated, as they are now. Other, we also are looking at other options for resolving Title IX issues such as mediation when appropriate or some sort of informal resolution process. And that's how we plan to not only implement our program, but keep it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next group, our superstar, Colton Beardsley, our student, is going to be doing the presentation. And along with him tonight are Blanca Rodriguez, the CMS Representative, Casey Ferris, the Classified Representative and Gabby Portman, our Faculty Member.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Colton Beardsley, which and I am presenting on behalf of Blanca Rodriguez, Casey Ferris and Gabby Portman for our team's Leadership Academy proposal. Our team group took a look at something that nearly every new student has to when first coming to ABC, our campus map. So this is ABC's current map. And what you first notice is the design. It can be pretty overwhelming to students who are maybe first looking at it, looking for a certain service or department. And you might also notice that it's hard to tell where you might actually be on the map. You could be standing right next to the library and not even notice it yourself when first looking at it. In response, our team's project and proposal was an interactive map through which the student body, staff and people who are interested in attending ABC could easily access the resources and departments that they are looking for. So after speaking with representatives from a variety of companies, we landed on the company campus maps. And as you can see through our presentation, this is an example of one of the maps that they provided. Right? It's a lot more realistic, a lot more lifelike. You could actually see where you are specifically on the map. And it's very detailed. And what you also notice is in the top right, you can actually see a little search bar. So let's say you were looking for the Financial Aid Department. You could actually type in Financial Aid. It would take you to the Financial Aid page and it would also highlight that building in particular. So it's both easily more accessible, not only on their webpage, but in person, you would be able to see where you need to go to get that specific information. So over the course of our project, we looked at how funding could be acquired from a variety of sources, right? We're not going to go up to one department like marketing and say, hey, we're going to take all the money from marketing to fund this venture, right? Because of how many areas are affected by this campus map and the way we can utilize its various advanced resources with this kind of software, we can actually take funding from a variety of places. And then also in terms of time of implementation, this would only take two to three months, once all the paperwork is hammered out, to actually go have the company come here and implement all stages of this process. So within one semester, this could already be applied and used by the student body as a whole. And in all, we believe that this project serves ABC's goal of serving students by way of making our campus far more accessible to all aspects of the student body and even employees as well. It just really connects the campus far more than what our current map offers. With that being said, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And our final group, we have Christine Ho, our student, Melissa Chavez, our Classified Representative, Caitlin Besinger, our Faculty Member and Ramon Castilejo, our CMS Member, were not able to be here. And they will be talking about alumni stories.
Good evening. Thank you very much for your time today. In order to catching up with the development of educational world, colleges constantly strive for innovation, not only in academia, but also in perception. And Antelope College is a place of hope, a safe way to dream and new futures are settled. But in the end, it's still blocked by the persistent misunderstanding that colleges are just for those who are not excellent in their studies. And this is an obstacle that keep many potential students away from us. So through our project, we hope to train that perception. To have trained the perception of Antelope College and to inspire today and tomorrow's student alike with career planning by hiding the successes of ABC alumni by featuring their stories through powerful and videos and visuals.
Okay, next slide. So as Christine was saying, two-year universities, colleges really do have a negative connotation around them. I remember when I was in high school, constantly hearing, oh, you're going to go to ABC? That's just a continuation of high school. And I'd be like, okay, I guess I will go. So, but it took somebody to come to pave the way for me and to give me a different perspective of ABC. And so we want to do that as a community and as a college to be able to change the perception as a whole for the Antelope Valley community. Not, as Christine was saying, you know, not many people have the opportunity to go to a four-year institution. And even if having that opportunity, having, coming to a two-year institution would probably be the best for so many people, I know for sure it would have worked out for me in the long run. But I'm grateful for my path anyway. So what you see here is Andre Barkanian. Andre graduated back in 2016. He started working in retail and after his education here at ABC, he was able to move on to a banking career and from there, he actually entered a defense career. And the, yeah, defense career. And so with that, when you see Andre's story, it wasn't what he planned, right? And so that is a story that a lot of our students have, you know, they don't start, they don't finish where they think that they're going to go, but their, their universe is expanded through ABC, hallelujah. And so a few ways that students can be impacted is through the enhanced college perception is by helping a positive narrative, create a positive narrative around the college, influencing both current and prospective students. Another one is the cultural and social awareness, which can encourage a sense of pride and belonging within the ABC community by showcasing diverse achievements. So again, going back to that banner, what we hope to do by changing the perspective is through different banners that we can put up at school. That way, when people drive up to our institution, they can see the success stories of different people that have come to the ABC campus. We also hope to launch a social media campaign in order to be able to reach people where they're already at. And in that, being able to change the narrative around ABC and make people once again practical of being able to stay in their community and from there, being able to launch either to other careers here or to different places here or beyond. So thank you so much for your time.
So thank you all for letting me indulge in here the wonderful proposals these teams made. Dr. Zalat, would you like the folks, how would you like to do?
Yes, please join us on stage. And so the Board of Trustees know the follow-through that we're having with these teams. Every vice president whose area is, potentially could execute parts of these plans is going to meet with the teams and because there are pieces of these things that are already in some of our plans. And so we're going to pick their expertise, pick their brains a little bit and learn from them. So please come up here, Board. I'm going to give you pins again to share with folks and I will give you-
Dr. Zalat, I have a question.
Yes, please.
How long has the leadership teams worked on their assigned project?
So these teams worked just this year. They actually were assigned their teams in December. And so essentially they worked January, February and March and some of April on their projects. So they, they had a fairly concentrated period of time to plan out some major projects.
And when will we see the culmination of their hard work and the research that they have obviously done?
So as they meet with the respective vice presidents, we will report back to the board how those, those plans are integrated with ongoing plans and/or what that could look like in the future.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a couple for you. Works out, there's ten again.
I'm going to take a lip. While you guys are all getting ready, the Title IX team is already scheduled to meet Ms. Harvey.
Okay, so Alejandro, you're going to have to orchestrate that from the back. We probably need to scrunch.
I would like to say that moving forward, as we do presentations, I would like to see things that involve students and faculty come first in the presentation so that we all have energy and we're listening and we can make sure that they receive from their presentations everything that is deserved. And so I just wanted to put that out there. And thank you all so much. We need approval for the consent agenda. May I get a motion? Discussion? Vote? Okay, so we're going to take a comment that goes along with fourteen three, Jason Bowen. Mr. Bowen, you can come on up and give your- So you can come up and give your comment.
I mean, there's good news in the personnel schedule and there's some bittersweet news. I wanted to comment on some of the bittersweet news. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, President Zalat, Ms. McPur, Ms. Cook, colleague and a dear friend quietly retired. I learned this from the personnel schedule. This is the end of an era, not just for him, but for me personally. He presented an FPD event in spring twenty fourteen I attended. It was a fascinating talk, looking at a work by Jean Francois Millay. Asked a lot of questions. We spoke afterwards and he invited my daughter and I to his home. This was in twenty fourteen. I was hired in twenty twelve. I could not have predicted what would occur after. Over the next five years, we'd spend time with him and his family, at least two Fridays a month for five years. His family became my extended family and they gave my daughter best friends and sisters. We watched documentaries, toured the Getty Museum many times and traveled to downtown Los Angeles on a few occasions. We talked about everything under the sun and some of those talks were tough. He sure didn't have an issue being honest with me and telling me what he thought. Those are the best friends I find. This brings me to a pressing issue. There seems to be an ongoing effort to pause the hiring of full-time faculty and to expedite the departure of existing full-time faculty. While I understand the reality of budget constraints, and those are very real, uh, tough decisions do have to be made. I urge the Board to consider the implications of such strategies going forward, given the budget crisis in California and other challenges. As someone who served as an adjunct before securing a full-time position, I experienced firsthand the instability and constant upheaval of moving from one temporary post to another. Full-time positions offer a chance for faculty to settle down, invest deeply in the college and by extension, the community. This stability is not just beneficial, but essential for creating an environment where meaningful connections and community engagement, uh, can flourish. As we consider the future of our college, let's remember that our decisions impact real lives, lives of people who are the very treasures of this institution. Let's strive to make choices that build stability, nurture community bonds, and honor the profound contributions of our dedicated faculty. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak on this matter. Uh, let's be mindful and forward, forward-thinking in our approaches, ensuring our actions today foster a thriving community for tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bowen. We already have motion in a second. Any discussion? Maybe we call for the vote on the.
Student trustee Rivera?
I approve.
Approve?
Aye.
Adams, Ms. Harvey?
Aye. We're to fifteen point one action items, approval of resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four slash nine, declaring the week of May nineteen through twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four as classified school employee week. May I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion? The vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
I approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo? Trustee Adams? Trustee Harvey?
Aye.
Motion clear.
Fifteen point two, we have a speaker card, Dr. Jason Bowen.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, this resolution, while commendable and necessary, prompts a criti- critical reflection. It compels us to ask, if we need a resolution to affirm our commitment to diversity, what have we been doing these past several years? History is not new to these challenges, yet here we stand, revisiting them yet again. My concern is that this resolution will become another hollow promise, much like those of previous years. Just last year, we bypassed an ideal chance to embody our diversity commitments by looking at a highly qualified person of color for the vice president of human resources position. And I say this with the utmost respect for our current president and our current human resources director, but we also had the opportunity to hire one of two men of color, uh, for the position of president, but did not. Instead of seizing a moment for change, we chose the comfort of the familiar, contradicting the very principles we espouse now and repeat year after year as we do in this current will, perhaps, in this current resolution. There's another issue. On February twelfth, the LGBTQ faculty committee was informed the cancellation of, of the spring drag show scheduled for the third week of February. The administration claimed, this is what I was told, we do not want to spend money on an LGBTQ event that isn't educational. Yet how can this stance be justified when last year's event catalyzed student engagement and dialogue on bravery and authenticity? Some sixty-five to seventy students not only attended, but also engaged deeply in a forty-five Q and A that was extended by the three performers, uh, due to the profound impact on the students. This event dismissed as noneducational was a testament to learning in its most dynamic form. I challenge the notion that such vibrant, life-affirming interactions are not educational. These events are not only educational, but they are also a place of safety and security for our students. LGBTQ students dressed up in drag at last year's event enjoyed the evening and confided in faculty that despite the freedom and validation they enjoyed there, they could not experience these freedoms on campus, in class, in the cafeteria, in the library. For them, A B C is a place of safety, it, it's not yet. Yet this was one place where they could learn and learn to be themselves. What did they get this year? Well, canceled event, but hey, they got inclusion and equity. In a ten-minute notice, they could organize a lavender graduation in which two students participated because of the lack of sufficient notice and support and fear. These token gestures do not equate to meaningful or impactful programming that genuinely serves our diverse student body. In closing, the resolution reads, I'll read two pieces of it. Whereas the diverse student population of the district is one of its greatest assets and closely reflects the diverse population of California. And whereas diversity enriches the educational experience through the exchange of different ideas, beliefs, experiences, and perspectives promotes personal growth because it challenges stereotypes, preconceptions, and bias, encourages critical thinking, and helps people learn to communicate effectively with others. We'll see what next year brings, courage and respect for the dignity of our students and employees or fear the status quo, lip service, and performance measures.
Your time is up, Dr. Bowen.
Thank you, Dr. Bowen. Fifteen point two, approval of resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four slash ten, declaring commitment to diversity. May I have a motion? Second? The vote, Patty?
Approved.
Oh, excuse me, Patty, discussion. We cannot call for a vote until the discussion and Mr. Reeves has something. Go ahead, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you very much, uh. We have a student population minority eighty-one percent. Uh, we have a staffing level that.
Mr. Reeves, can you pull your microphone a little bit closer, please?
Okay, hear me now. Okay, we have a, uh, student population of eighty-one percent minority. Our staffing is forty-plus, uh, minority and growing. I want to assure you that anyone that has come up for any of the positions that were mentioned, we gave them full measure. I interviewed them, everybody was equal. We presented candidates to the president and she selected them. We're committed to diversity, quality on campus. And this is the affirmation of it. Sure, things are not perfect. Sure, there's people maybe I'd like to see on campus, they're not here, but someday they will. So this is a step forward and let's keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The vote?
Approved.
Approve?
Aye.
Yes, definitely. Okay, so we are fifteen point three, approval of resolution dash twenty, number twenty-three slash twenty-four eleven, intention to grant road easement to city of Lancaster. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Discussion? The vote?
Approved.
Approve?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Fifteen point four, approval of resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four slash twelve, intention to grant drainage easement to city of Lancaster. May I get a vote? Discussion? The vote, Patty?
Approved.
Approve?
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams? Trustee Harvey?
Yes. Okay, so fifteen point five, we have a comment card, Dr. Jason Bowen.
It is up to the Board whether to grant, uh, additional time. Uh, I am aware that there are others who speak on occasion and when they're over their three minutes, they would, you know, they're granted thirty seconds to a minute, but whenever I'm over my three minutes, this is just ruthlessness, but that's okay, I understand.
Dr. Bowen, you can have thirty seconds extra. We're not being ruthless, go right ahead.
Thank you. That's why I was speed reading in, with the last comments. Uh, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, uh, as the president of the Faculty Union, it's imperative that I address an ongoing issue that affects our ability, uh, to resolve matters efficiently and cooperatively. Historically, our district has not settled disputes at the lowest possible level with the, uh, Faculty Union, often necessitating involvement from Purb to resolve what could be handled, issues that could be handled internally. This approach is not only inefficient, but also strains our collective capacity to work harmoniously. This past fall, a significant issue arose where the district made revisions to the class waitlist procedures without consulting the Faculty Union in these discussions, where the Faculty Union is the exclusive bargaining unit for faculty and where this matter is subject to bargaining. I expressed this openly at a mid-Senate meeting in November. Despite this, I acknowledge the necessity of revising these procedures temporarily while we aim to fully negotiate the matter in this year's bargaining sessions. With that said, I would like to extend my appreciation, sincere appreciation to Vice President Kathy Beckett for her dedication and persistent efforts through this spring semester to address this issue. Her commitment has led to what I believe is a good agreement that you will vote on, that merits your approval. This collaboration is a step in the right direction and it exemplifies the potential for positive outcomes when, when we engage in open and constructive dialogue. I'm optimistic about the future and look forward to continued cooperation with the district. Let's keep working together to make more, uh, good work like this happen, fostering an environment of mutual respect and effective resolution. Thank you for considering this matter. My hope is that the Board approves this agreement.
Thank you, Dr. Bowen. May I get a motion for fifteen point five? Discussion? Vote?
Approved.
Student, uh, trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes. Fifteen point six is approval of the Emrah Valley Community College District, A B C C D and Emrah Valley Federation Classified Employees, A B C F C E, twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five revised classification, reclassification process, timeline memorandum of understanding, M O U. May I, uh, get a motion?
So move.
Discussion? The vote?
Approved.
Approve?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes. Fifteen seven, approval of consultant services agreement between Drakeford Scott and Associates LLC and Antelope Valley Community College for providing diversity, equity, and inclusion training to staff through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. May I get a motion?
So move.
Discussion?
Uh, yes. Um, I, uh, would prefer that our own staff. They're familiar with our campus outside. Energy not. I'm gonna vote no.
Any further discussion?
Is there any reason as to why this isn't in the House?
The services provided by Dr. Drakeford and his, uh, team are facilitation services for one of our divisions as we, uh, work on not only, um, diversity, equity, and inclusion training, but also, uh, interpersonal communication and facilitation.
And I would, uh, Mr. Rivera, just to let you know, I do believe that this is a specific area that a person would be trained in. If that makes sense. Any further discussion? Vote?
Approved.
Approve?
No.
Buffalo?
Yes.
Adams?
Aye.
Harvey?
Yes. Fifteen eight, approval of academic policies and procedures, A P N T Committee's recommendations of course listing for fall of twenty twenty-four. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? Vote?
Approved.
Approve?
Aye.
Mr. Buffalo?
Yes.
Adams?
Aye.
Yes. Fifteen nine, approval of annual simulation lab agreement between Emrah Valley Union High School District and Low Valley College and Kaiser Permanente. May I get a motion?
So move.
Second?
Discussion? The vote?
Approved.
Approve?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Yes. Fifteen ten, approval of clinical affiliation agreement between Berchenko and Rosman, higher practic corp, D V A Lancaster Health Solutions and Emrah Valley College for medical office assisting program. May I get a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Vote?
Approved.
Approve?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Fifteen eleven, approval of clinical affiliation agreement between Kaiser Permanente and Antelope Valley Community College District through January thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? Discussion?
Uh, yes, um, what is the cost of this?
Yes, we're on fifteen eleven, is the clinical affiliation agreement between Kaiser Permanente and Antelope Valley College. I'm not sure.
These are, but you're right, these are, uh, they're agreements so that we can execute our clinical for our students.
Internship, is that the internship?
It's, it, clinicals are like internships, but.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Any further discussion? The vote?
Approved.
Approve?
Aye.
Yes. Fifteen twelve, approval of clinical affiliation agreement between Leonard Askurian M D, a medical corporation in Antelope Valley Community College District for the medical office assist, assistant program. May I get a motion?
So move.
Discussion? I actually have a question about this. A, a single service provider is a part of our.
So every, every group that we work with, we have to have an agreement with. And so for our medical assistance program, this is another site for clinical.
Okay, thank you so much. Any further discussion? The vote?
Approved.
Approve?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Fifteen three, approval of clinical affiliation agreement. Excuse me, Patty, did the motion pass? Okay. Fifteen thirteen, approval of clinical affiliation agreement between West Coast University and Antelope Valley Community College for collaboration of the clinical experience. May I get a motion?
So move.
Discussion? The vote?
Approved.
Approve?
Aye.
Yes. Fifteen fourteen, approval of contract renewal with County of Los Angeles Sheriff's Department for General Law and Security Services through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. May I get a motion?
So move.
Discussion?
Yes, um, Madam President, what is the cost of?
So I, I apologize, I have the brief, uh, the brief agenda in front of me, but in the detailed item under, when you open up the agenda, it tells the cost and it tells the, through the extent of twenty twenty-nine.
Does the, the Vice President of Administrative Services?
You have that detail, Shami.
The total projected cost is two point nine three million dollars. Um, what we have is a schedule with rates associated by, um, service level.
Every year?
Every year.
Okay, and, and this agreement is for two thousand twenty-nine, five years?
It's a five-year agreement allowing us to, um, terminate annually. So we, we could decide not to renew, um, annually.
We have to renew it annually?
We do not have to renew.
Oh, well.
No, we do not.
Oh, okay, well, I, I, I think that's a pretty long agreement, five years and, and, um.
To be clear, sir, it's a five-year agreement with an optional annual exit clause.
That is correct.
So we don't have to renew every year. However, if for fiscal reasons we needed to go a different direction, annually, we could revisit that.
But why, okay, if we have to do it annually, why?
No, we don't have, but.
We, it's a yes for five years with the option to say no each year.
I, I understand that, but why, why not make it just every year? I, I understand that, but why, why not make it just every year, every year, every year, not five years?
If the contract runs without problems from twenty twenty four through twenty twenty nine, then we're fine. We've already approved it. Let's say in twenty twenty six, we have an issue that year, we have an option to vote no.
You know, we're doing this on a, uh, some of these contracts, we're making five-year contracts out of them, when in the past, it's been three years max. Why, why are we going for five years on some of these contracts?
This one was previously a five-year contract. That is what the county gave us and that is what the prior contract was as well.
It's for five years?
It was for five years.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Brier, I just want to be clear. It's two point nine three million over the next five years. Am I correct or annual? All right. Any further discussion? The vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
See Gaines?
Approve.
Aye.
See Buffalo? See Adams?
Aye.
Harvey?
Yes. Fifteen fifteen approval to amend the agreement with Wallace Family Eye Care Vision Services for updated pricing of approved services through December thirty first of twenty twenty four. May I get a motion?
So move.
Discussion?
Yes. Who recommends uh, the students to these various medical services that we approve of?
These come through our basic needs services. So when uh, right now, uh, Dr. Zimmerman's area handles the basic needs. So if they need emergency medical or housing or food or those kinds of things, it funnels through that area in student service.
We don't have a healthcare.
We are working on establishing that more fully. We have, we have a healthcare center with very limited services, which is why we contract out for vision and dental. We would never run vision and dental out of our own office anyway. Um, you would have to employ those doctors or, or make other kinds of agreements that um, this is what makes the most sense for our students.
They were working on a healthcare center?
We have a healthcare facility in the student services building and in, in the plan, in the reorganization, Dean Zimmerman is going to work on building that area out more thoroughly to offer more appropriate and, and comprehensive services than what we have at the moment. But even when we build that area out, we won't employ an optometrist or an optician. Um, so these kinds of services will always probably be contracted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Aye.
See Buffalo?
Yes.
See Adams?
Aye.
Harvey?
Yes. Fifteen sixteen approval of United Farm Workers, U F W Foundation Campus Mentor Agreement for the Fall twenty twenty four through Spring twenty twenty five Academic Year. May I get a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion? Vote?
Approve.
Approve?
Aye.
Yes.
Adams?
Yes. Fifteen seventeen approval of services agreement between High Desert Broadcasting and Emalo Valley Community College for radio advertising to promote new in-gen program. May I receive a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Approve.
Approve?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Yes.
See Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes. Fifteen eighteen approval of amended services agreement between Lamar Texas Limited Partnership and Emalo Valley Community College for billboard advertising to support for enrollment for May twenty twenty four through June of twenty twenty five. May I get a motion?
So move.
Discussion?
Uh, yes, Madam President. Uh, I understand that the next meeting in June, we're gonna get a staff report on this. Is that correct?
Correct. There will be an update on our advertisement marketing program and there will be uh, numbers about uh, what we've achieved so far.
Well, I, on the basis of that, because we don't have a staff report, well, I, I suggest we postpone this until we get a staff report.
The, I can appreciate your desire to do that, sir. We have a limited time in which to expend the funds that are dedicated to this and it needs to be expended within this fiscal year.
And when is the fiscal year end?
Well, we are already under deadlines. I see Shawnee twitching already. We are already deadline, uh, under deadlines. We have to, at this point, do past deadline justification forms for any expenditures that we're putting through because in order to close our books on time, fiscal year ends on June thirtieth. In order, in order to close our books on time, we've got to get all of these purchases through all of our processes.
But um, you know, we're charged with expending public funds. We should not be under this type of strain that we have to approve this or we are not going to get it. Uh, no, if, if it's a good deal, it's a good deal and it'll be there tomorrow. I, I want, I want a staff report before I approve the expenditures for public money. So I suggest we postpone this until June. We could use other funds if we have to.
We had a motion calling for the question, Mr. Reeves. I mean, sorry, Madam President.
Madam President, may I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
Uh, I just want to say that um, I, I know from experience that these um, billboards, they, if we do not renew, they, they're a lot of, they're in demand, uh, especially the ones that are on freeway. They're very hard to get. The only thing I would like to ask is in our next report, I would just like to see how effective they are and uh, maybe if, I don't know if we're asking our incoming students, how did you become aware of Emalo Valley Community College? Is it from the billboards? I would just like to see some data showing us um, some results from the student, but I, I can tell you that they're, they're not going to be there if we wait.
So I, I appreciate that. I can briefly tell you um, that all of the landing pages that are on both the bus wraps and the billboards are dedicated to that. So anyone who takes A V C dot E D U backslash now, if they go there, we know that they got that landing page web address from our marketing. And so it may not be specific to bus wraps or billboards, but we know it's specific to our marketing campaign. And so there will be data that you will be shown and I appreciate the comments.
The vote?
Approve.
Approve?
No.
Yes.
Aye.
No. Fifteen nineteen approval of service agreement between Transfer Inc., D B A Transfer and Emalo Valley Co- Community College District to provide aviation software. May I get a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Vote?
Approve.
Approve?
Aye.
Yes. Fifteen twenty approval to extend the use of California Multiple Award Schedule, C M A S Piggyback Agreement with Entus Solutions Inc., D B A E three sixty for the purchase of information technology goods and services. May I get a motion? Discussion? Vote?
Approve.
Approve?
Aye.
Yes. Fifteen twenty one approval to utilize the California Multiple Award Schedule, C M A S, with Apogee Telecom Inc. for the purchase of information technology goods and services. May I get a motion?
So move. Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Approve.
Approve?
Aye.
Yes. Fifteen twenty two approval to utilize the Foundation for California Community College, Colleges Agreement with Hit Labs Inc. for the purchase of I T related products. May I get a motion? Discussion? Vote?
Approve.
Approve?
Aye.
Yes. Fifteen twenty three approval to utilize the NASCO Value Point Agreement with Karasoff Technology Corporation for the purchase of I T related goods and services through September fifteenth, twenty twenty six. May I get a motion? Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Aye.
Trustee Adams? Trustee Harvey?
Yes. Fifteen twenty four approval to extend the use of the Regents of the University of California and National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance Cooperative Agreement with the W W Granger Inc. for the purchase of maintenance, repair, and operations supplies and related services. May I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo? Trustee Buffalo? Trustee Adams? Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Fifteen twenty five approval for field contract for services between Duffy Electric Service Corporation, D B A Duffy Power Services and Emalo Valley Community College for the repair of the central plant generator. May I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams? See Harvey?
Yes. Fifteen twenty six approval to award bid number A V C twenty twenty three slash twenty twenty four dash five for elevator and wheelchair lift maintenance and repairs with unrestricted fund. May I get a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Aye.
Trustee Adams? Trustee Harvey?
Yes. Fifteen twenty seven approval of notice of intent to reject all bids for carpet, signage, and paint, number twenty two dash zero zero eight, R F B number A V C twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four dash nine. May I get a motion?
So move.
Discussion?
Uh, yes, uh, President. Can somebody explain, uh, what's it about?
Yes, fifteen twenty seven rejecting all bids.
So uh, we have insufficient bids to carry forward for insuffici-, there's insufficient competition amongst the bids in order for us to ensure that we are achieving uh, the best value for the bid.
Uh, uh, we didn't get three bids on each project?
No, we had two bids and one withdrew, which left us with one single bidder and it was insufficient to come.
It, doesn't the law require five thousand dollars the more you use three bidders? That's the rule?
Which is why we're asking for permission to refuse this bid and so we can go out again.
Are these local vendors?
Shawnee, would you like to answer these questions?
They're local from Southern California. They're part of our typical pool. One of them underestimated or um, it wa-, it was greatly under budget and they had to withdraw it. The other one was over budget. So what we've opted to do now is to break it up into multiple projects involving multiple buildings.
Uh huh.
So carpet, sign, and paint in F A and um, uh, the library. All of these different projects will now be bid so that if some come over, we can pick and choose which projects to do with scheduled maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
The vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams? Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Trustees, I would like to put fifteen twenty eight and fifteen twenty nine together as they are scheduled maintenance fund. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams? Trustee Harvey?
Yes. Trustees, I would also like to group together fifteen thirty, fifteen thirty one and thirty two as they are all uh, relative to measure A V funds. May I get a motion? Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
See Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Harvey?
Yes. We now have uh, our informational items and seventeen our reports and announcements. Academic Senate, Hal Hansman.
Good evening, trustees, President Zellet, Ms. McClure, and Ms. Cook. Uh, this is the time of year, as you know, that uh, faculty are excited for the end of the uh, spring semester and of course for graduation, which I know you were all at. That was a great event. Uh, we then, of course, have to get our grades in and do our other various uh, work to get, finish the semester and make sure everything is good for our students. And then, uh, as you also know, today is our first day of summer school. So we do a quick turnaround and get right back to it. A few of us do get to enjoy some summer vacation, but many of us uh, continue uh, working for the good of our students and for our college. Uh, I, as I um, started last month, I'm continuing the tradition. I'm gonna try to give, bring a highlight some faculty or mem-, or more than one faculty, uh, who are really doing exemplary work. And this month, the faculty I want to highlight are Travis Lee and Caleb Healy, members of our welding faculty. They have uh, together with their students, uh, created a uh, barbecue smoker, an A V C barbecue smoker. It's really quite remarkable. I think we're gonna have pictures here in a second. Uh, there is a picture of it in the, you know, toward the process. And then our automotive students, I think we can go to the next picture, uh, painted it. And then we can go to the last one. And here's a beautiful uh, final rendition. It actually has been already used. It's a remarkable achievement, uh, of really a collaboration with the students. And I want to highlight especially two students who uh, did a, really a lot of the work, uh, really organizing the project. And they are Alexandria, Alexandra, pardon me, Alexandra Martinez and Grace Henderson. And Grace Henderson is also an intern currently at John Deere. Really great work by our faculty and our staff. And, and then uh, in a, a useful thing for years to come. And I hope you get to enjoy some uh, some of the fruits of the uh, the, the equipment. Thank you, trustees, and see you in a month.
Thank you. Seventeen point two, Emalo Valley College Federation of Teachers. Dr. Bowen?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Uh, there are many outstanding issues that remain with the district. Uh, and of course, this is uh, the, from the perspective of the faculty union, the issues are underpaying faculty, illegal and indefinite involuntary, ongoing paid administrative leave, illegal investigations, illegal termination of past practices affecting adjunct employees, violation of due process provisions, efforts to reduce transparency, obstruction, delayed tax it, tactics, obfuscation, retaliation, intimidation, mistreatment, mistreatment of our students, censorship and propaganda, lip service, nonsensical policies, inability and unwillingness to settle matters at the lowest possible level. Needless to say, I've not been optimistic. Perhaps my vision is colored by disillusionment and lack of confidence for this administration in settling these matters due to my proximity to and infinite involvement in working with faculty in the trenches. It's ceaseless. I know of some in the Academic Senate who do not share my sentiments. We've had deep talks about these matters. That's fair. However, I'm told stories of only a single grievance filed at Pasadena City College in three years and they have four unions. Where the single grievance that was filed was done so to motivate H R to rectify a matter involving sanitation. The matter was immediately resolved to the satisfaction of everyone. This is the only issue they, they, they had for three years. Why? Because. Why? Because reason is respected. Why can't we do the same? Why can't we, why have we filed almost ten grievances this past year or more? It's a severe dysfunction, in my opinion, and that's not due to the faculty union. Here we have the lawyer up and every matter seemingly needs the involvement of attorneys. Every answer seemingly no. The harshest penalties seemingly need to be applied, but the district could consider an alternative course of action that demonstrates respect for an employee. The overly punitive approach is taken. This is the environment we're in, that we've been in. I'm simply telling you the truth. I hope it will change, but in the meantime, I'm grateful for our dedicated hard, hard-working union team and the exceptionally talented, uh, attorneys who have decided to work with us and join us. And I wanna end by saying that I am also grateful for the work, the good work that the administration does do in those matters where, uh, they should be praised, and that certainly is the case with regards to many things. However, I hope that these things are resolved sooner rather than later. So I'm hoping that in the future, as I say often, we can learn to resolve matters at the lowest level. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Relling. We have Antelope Valley College Federation Classified Employees, panel of board.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me a few extra minutes. Just saying.
Already approved this.
She, this was pre-approved. It was a request came to the board. Yes.
Oh, no, it's okay. I wanted to make sure he knew. Um, first of all, I wanted to invite the board members to the Classified Recognition Luncheon on Wednesday, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. This is an opportunity where classified are celebrated, and I hope that all of you can come because I still believe this campus can't run without us. There have been some exciting things that have happened, and I just want to share my thoughts on it. I, this, I'm gonna talk about the Leadership Academy first. I applied many times before, and I was finally granted this year the opportunity to participate in the academy. When I was accepted, I believe it must have been at the right time and the right circumstances, although I was hesitant at first. My experience being a small part of the Leadership Academy was an experience that I truly appreciate. I met people I would not have, and as always, my greatest joy and excitement working at ABC is not what the students bring to me, but what I can learn from them and what, and what they can bring and what they can, what I can learn from them. The task of them, and this academy was an example of that because I think we all learn from our students. The task of completing a presentation, sharing our ideas, building consensus, and I guess I lost my place. Sorry. Building consensus and each placing their own spark on the project, bringing it to fruition was an amazing opportunity. To be honest, I didn't always understand where this process was taking us. I had my moments of doubt. However, staying until the end, I observed those responsible for facilitating the Leadership Academy were extremely committed to making this program a success and were eager for feedback. I had to laugh when Rhonda exclaimed, exclaimed, "Keep going." I'm writing notes of everything you all are saying as we were providing our feedback. And that brought it full circle for me because they understand a philosophy, a philosophy that I have always subscribed to. And that is, leading is not being a true leader to me is someone who learns from those you lead. Not you leading them, but learning, but leading by following. And so I appreciate what I learned in the Leadership Academy, and I appreciate the fact that they're open to feedback and they don't view feedback as negative. So again, thank you for that opportunity. And I wanna talk about now an event that happened for the first time at Antelope Valley College, which I am very proud to have been a participant of. Um, and I wanna tell you all a little secret. Don't go to Dr. Zellet with anything that you think might be an idea because she is surely gonna make it yours. She's gonna put you to work right away. I was reminded of Women's Black History Month by Casey Ferris, and also had some friends off-campus remind me of the same. I sent Dr. Zellet an email asking her if she were familiar with this event, and she responded by suggesting, suggesting I moderate, and the rest is history. This was a wonderful opportunity. To moderate this first Women's, ABC Women's Black History Month event was extraordinary, with, with an extraordinary group of women. There were only a couple of weeks to plan, but with the help of Patty McClure and directors of the following departments, campus events, marketing, performing arts, and their staff, it all went out, went off without a hitch, and I can't thank each and every one of them enough. On the panel was Board President Michelle Harvey, Dean Ladonna Tremble, Dean Rashida Brownie Lees, legal counsel, Bridgette Cook Esquire. I'll get that right eventually, Bridget. Um, Director Kendra Ruff and Professor Marinica Abadayo Igaye. I researched and developed questions during the event. After introductions, we sat for one hour having meaningful conversation and each panelist providing heartfelt responses. You could sense the level of the impact of each of their responses, which were poignant and impactful, and left the audience, the panelists, and myself in tears and wanting to hear more. One hour clearly was not enough. And I was touched by the outpouring of those who attended, who were so moved by the event. In the spirit of DEIA, I hope this event will be repeated each year and to lead, and will lead to affinity groups on campus so that we can mentor students and one another and uplift and support one another on this campus as women of color. The outpouring came from this event from those who attended and was amazing, definitely demonstrated this was much needed. As I pondered the twenty-three, twenty-four ongoing Student-Employee Diversity Events Program list, which was in the board packet tonight, I could not help but hope that next year this event will be on the diversity events list as well. I think Bridgette said it best, and I will para- paraphrase. In response to the questions, "How do you support yourself and others?" She said, "When facing challenges sometimes at work, she turns to her close-knit group of friends outside of work for support." That really humanized her for me because sometimes she comes across as somebody that everything just bounces off her shoulders. And so it, it, it just really, and it made me think she does what I do, what we all do. We all face challenges. We all consider moving up the ladder. We all desire to grow. We all need a safe place to land. We all need to have conversations with those who have felt and dealt with our struggles. We all have opportunities that pass us by. This takes nothing away from any other group. Our growth, our kinship will help us build, to build forward, helping others both like, like and unlike us across the campus. Black students have the lowest success rate, and our president shared with me that our black female students are at the lowest success educationally, and that was really a surprise to me. We, as a campus, have an obligation to fix that, to build up our students and one another. We need to pour into each other. That event left me with a feeling of connection and building community. So thank you for the opportunity. Let me leave you with this wonderful writing that was sent to me, which I believe captured the essence of the entire event, and I could only fi- I could only find the author, not the title of this writing, and I will send it to the panelists tomorrow. Sisterhood is the phenomenon that occurs when women quit seeing each other as mirrors or reflections of themselves and start seeing each other as a one-of-a-kind work of art. Sisterhood happens when women view each other as deep wells of support and inspiration, as teammates instead of competitors. Sisterhood happens between women who are secure enough to stop being afraid of each other, who do not feel that another woman's different life choices are a judgment of her own choice. Sisterhood happens and we become curious instead of defensive about our differences. Sisterhood is not the same beliefs. Sisterhood does not require the same beliefs or thoughts or political parties or churches. Peace is not about becoming the same. It's about becoming okay with being different. There is so much untapped power in sisterhood. Thank you, my sisters.
Thank you, Ms.
And that excerpt she read was from Glennon Doyle.
Oh, wonder. We now have Renee Lynn Wilson. Did I say that wrong? Yes?
Yes, she did.
We just wanna make sure that everyone's aware that the-
Sorry, I skipped Ash.
The interpreters, um, are no longer on, so it's all captioned.
So have I- Okay, we'll just swap.
Yes, go ahead. So, um, instead of me giving the report, former president Steve Benet has-
Um, ASO hasn't met yet and, uh, done appointments and swearing in yet. Um, so I handed, um, well, I kinda wordsmithed everything together in seconds. Uh, but, um, thank you, board members, for the recognition and the photo. I wanted to extend my gratitude to ABC and its students and its facilities. Just a moment ago, I helped out two students find their way to their jazz class i- in the evening at the Fine Arts Squad. It's been a privilege to be a president of ASO. ASO has served and will continue to serve ABC. Um, as Ren Wilson, um, formerly, she was our VP of Club Affairs and overseeing about twenty-four clubs on campuses. Our hope is that we expand those clubs and, uh, be inclusive and diverse as we go on to the next semester and school year. And, um, I'm just really content on, uh, Ren saying yes, uh, to the president role. I remember our first time just planting flags at the nine eleven memorial in front of the administration building. Uh, it just happened, the, uh, uh, Veterans Club was there, um, doing, uh, the mission and just, uh, putting the flags there, and then Ren, uh, just, uh, helped me, well, came along and we helped them out. So it's just those little small things that you don't see and those stories I love to take with me. And, um, I am very content in passing the duty to her. Uh, now you'll still see me around as I'm just gonna, um, transition to the role of secretary. And, um, how many know that you need someone to, uh, dot the i's and t's in a moment? Um, so, um, as ASO secretary, I just wanted to thank you and leave you with a movie recommendation. Um, Tourette's Awareness Month is May fifteen to June fifteen. Uh, the movie Front of the Class by, uh, director Peter Warner is in honor of, like, a Tourette's aware- well, it's about, uh, a man with Tourette's, uh, Brad Cohen, who refused to be beaten by his affliction Tourette's Syndrome. Brad Cohen vows to become a teacher, overcoming, uh, prejudice, ignorance, and the fear as he struggles to make his dream come true. And he did. He became a teacher, and after, uh, many no's, he got a yes, being a teacher. So I just wanted to share that in honor of Tourette's Awareness Month. And, um, yeah, and thank you for your time, and I'm sure Ren is gonna do justice, and she's not gonna be there alone. So I'm happy to leave that as my last report and, oh, man. Okay, um, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Beau. We, uh, skipped Ms. Ashley Hawkins. Ashley with the Confidential Management Supervisory and Administrator Employees.
Good evening, everyone. Um, thanks for skipping me so I didn't have to go right after Pam. Pam, that was really powerful. So, um, I just wanted to, um, say congratulations to everyone for making it through another successful academic year. We got to celebrate and have, uh, what I love to call our Super Bowl, uh, with all the various different, um, smaller graduation ceremonies as well as the big commencement, excuse me, and, um, which is probably, uh, all of our favorite time of year. Um, I also sort of made the decision with the board at CMSA that the best use of this time is to highlight the folks in our group and the work that they're doing. And, um, I think we're all aware, but probably not specifically aware of the hard work done by the folks that work in HR. So I'm just gonna highlight just a little bit of what they do. Um, they are one of our biggest groups because all of their employees are confidential, and then they also have a few directors, as well as the VP. Um, they are currently working hard with various groups and campus partners to facilitate and execute a great week to celebrate classified professionals. They have, um, facilitated the graduation of sixteen participants from the Leadership Academy. They are fac- currently facilitating numerous recruitments and onboarding, including one VP and three dean, dean positions. They are drafting and implementing the district's new EEO plan. They are working with CMSA to implement, and we are officially in action with the CMSA's first reclass committee in quite some time. They provide, uh, monthly short-term hourly reports to all of us managers, which is a detailed report of exactly how many hours all of our short-term hourly employees are working across campus. And they're processing and distributing the per payout for classified employees. I asked them if they could give me some numbers to articulate the work that they're doing. Um, they have retained one thousand three hundred and twenty-eight employees. They've outprosessed a hundred and eighty-one employees, onboarded a hundred and seventy-three employees, processed at least ten thousand five hundred leaves, and processed at least fifty-seven thousand records for time reporting. They do this work tirelessly and often thanklessly, but none of us get to do what we do without them. Thank you, guys. Have a great night, and a happy late Mother's Day to all the moms.
Thank you so much. Now we have the Antelope Valley College Foundation, Ms. Diane Knippel.
Good evening. It was a busy, it's all I can say. We gave over two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in student scholarships to over two hundred and fifty students. We did videos, um, oh, uh, over three hundred videos to each of our donors. So I really wanna say thank you to all the donors. We have put a big marquee up, thank you, Emily, for doing that for us, um, on the big tron out there so that anybody who contributed to the scholarship program can be thanked. We also ran a wine walk, and it couldn't have been done without staff. Um, I had some personal issues in, in April, so I was gone for about two weeks, and it was seamless. So the staff just jumped in, got it done, and made it work. And we have tied our highest record at thirty-three, almost thirty-four thousand dollars net, uh, and the highest attended, uh, wine walk. And that money that we do raise goes to the Antelope Valley Students' Community Endowment, which funds the faculty grant program that we run each year. Again, great, great teamwork from my team. Thank you to the board. Many of you attended, sold tickets. Barbara did a great job. Um, not to say that Michael didn't, but she outshined you this year, Sky, I gotta tell you. So thank you. Appreciate your time and energy.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions for Diane? No, thank you. We now have Office of the Superintendent President, Dr. Savard.
Good evening, trustees and student trustee. Uh, last month, the board meeting occurred right as we had an eclipse. And this month, the board meeting is on the heels of Aurora Borealis reaching all the way into Southern California due to a rare and severe solar geomagnetic storm. There is much energy in the universe right now, and likewise, there is much energy on ABC's campus as we finish the academic year twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Energy can be captured and channeled for constructive uses, and we see evidence of that in the Antelope Valley, in the solar and wind farms, as well as other experiments in renewable energy. I would encourage all employees of the district to consider how we are all harnessing and channeling the energy in our world. Everything we do is action that brings reaction, including speech. All of us have the privilege of free speech and the respect, responsibility of truthfulness in our speech. When words represent inaccuracies and cause doubt and sow division on our campus, that act as an irresponsible use of a privilege. On the other hand, when words are truthful, regardless of how much the hearer agrees or likes what they hear, that truth stands the test of time. As we launch into summer session and the future, I encourage us all to heed the encouragement in the four agreements. Be impeccable with your word. The governor's Mother Day gift to us all was the release of the May revise. In an attempt to interpret the governor's plan, the chancellor- the Chancellor's Office and others have released commentary that appears to present budget challenges in the best light possible. Tomorrow, CCLC and the Department of Finance will release their comments on the May revise that will focus on community college impacts and we will have institutional conversation about that report. For now, here are the highlights and I feel like I should use sarcastic finger quotes around the word highlights. One, in 2022, 2023 fiscal year adjustments are postponed by what is being called the $8 billion maneuver, which essentially kicks a really big can down the road. Two, 2023, 2024 and 2425, there's proposed coverage of Prop 95 funds through the Prop 98 Reserve Account. The downside is after 2425, those reserves will be depleted. Three, while sustaining full COLA funding for 2324 budget year, that's this year that we're finishing, by the way, the May revise proposes, and this is a direct quote, "Funding of COLA and nursing funding for the 2425 budget year." It doesn't sustain COLA and funding, which means if they sustain the COLA, which they say it's coming from somewhere else. So as you can tell, the state of California is going through fiscal challenges. We will be having a virtual town hall to discuss the CCLC Department of Finance response and that response is slated to come out tomorrow. So if you're on any of the listservs or you can go to the Chancellor's Office website and you'll read the, the report. And we will have an update on our budgeting process. And that town hall, virtual town hall will be Wednesday, May 29th from 12:30 to 1:30. You will receive an email from the President's Office and when you register for that town hall, you'll get the Zoom link and we'll be able to have an update where we are now and some Q and A. In happier news, we had a phenomenal graduation on Friday, May 3rd. The weather was beautiful, the graduates were amazing and the faculty, classified professionals, administrators and trustees were so proud to bear witness to this event. Many thanks to Dr. Jill Zimmerman, the graduation committee, the campus events staff, campus safety and volunteers who made graduation a joyous and safe event. Today, we began summer session and there are just over 1,500 FTEs enrolled. That's over 400 more than last summer. Thanks to Academic Affairs and Faculty, Student Services and the Classified Professionals and Faculty in that department for their concerted efforts to grow offerings where students need them. By strategically increasing offerings, ABC is growing both in headcount and FTEs as we work toward 11-4 by 2024. Thank you to all who are devoted to serving students and increasing their opportunities and success. As we continue to reorient ourselves to post-pandemic life in the workplace, I encourage everyone to actively choose every day to live and work in community. I encourage all who are part of this community to speak words that build and bless regardless of classification and function. When I arrived at ABC two years ago, some of the first meetings I had were with our, our union representatives. I met with Ms. Ford, then I met with Dr. Bowen and I promised them that I would tell the truth. I also promised them that they would not always like what I say, but they could count on it being the truth. I have not strayed from that commitment to them or this community. As we move forward during uncertain times, know that we will do so together with the core commitment to serve students and be kind. Finally, I invite all of you to join the campus in celebrating Classified Professional Appreciation Week from Monday, 5/20 through 5/24. On Monday morning, there's going to be a breakfast, Wednesday, there's going to be a lunch. We invite you all to come and celebrate the wonderful work that they do. There are special events scheduled throughout the week and we look forward to celebrating them and celebrating with them. Thank you, Classified Professionals, thank you faculty, thank you administrators, thank you trustees for all that you do.
Our Associated Student Organization Representative, Student Trustee Anthony Rivera.
I'm gonna keep mine short because I don't think I'll get my seconds. But congratulations to all the graduates. I want to put a spotlight on Mr. Colton Beersley, our former senator, very proud of him and I know he's gonna go and do great things. Congratulations to all the graduates and happy Mother's Day, happy late Mother's Day. And I'm very excited to continue in this opportunity as student trustee. I have thoroughly enjoyed my past year, serving on this board and with these amazing people. And I look forward to this next year. So thank you and have a good night.
Thank you so much. Ms. Gay?
Thank you, Madam President. I just, a few little notes here. First of all, I want to say to Diane Knippel that I think everything the foundation does is, is wonderful and it's, and I know that it's all focused on serving our students at Antelope Valley Community College. But I have to say that I really enjoyed the, the scholarship breakfast this year because unlike last year, my, my, my winners, the scholarship recipients, for some reason, were, were not there, but this year, everybody was at our table. And as, as I listened to the stories, Michael Adams and I were at the same table. We, I, I was just so pleased with the, with the young people that, that were selected for these scholarships and their goal as they're moving forward in their very young lives. And so it was, it was a wonderful event, Diane, thank you so much for that. And I want to say to the Leadership Academy, wow, I just wish I could be on that. But anyway, I know I can't, but anyway, the work that each one of those entities is doing is such exceptional work. I too want to shout out Colton's group because I loved the map, repeat it, I love the map. So I hope we see that map come back to us because it really, really made viewing the, the college a lot easier and I think it would do the same for ours. I want to say to Dr. Zimmerman, another successful graduation, Dr. Zimmerman. And it was, it just, everything was perfect for that evening and I know that it wouldn't be the case if it wasn't for your leadership and making sure that that event goes off without a hitch year after year. And last, but I just want to say, the smoker, how do I get one of those? That is, I, I love it that it's ABC. I mean, I, I just need one of those smokers for sure. They should be making them distill or something, I don't know. Great, great work, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Reeves?
First of all, thank you to everyone that came up and spoke before the board. We really appreciate your opinions and your thoughts. And secondly, I want to wish everybody a wonderful Memorial Day in two weeks and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buffalo?
Wow, it has been a busy, busy couple of months here. I, I am just blown away. The wine walk was excellent. From now on, my wife is not allowed to spend money there. Okay, we get that cleared up. I'm still waiting for the margarita and guac festival. Okay, so I know you'll take care of that. The graduation went really well. It's an amazing thing what happens when one year changes or you get bad weather and then you get great weather and how nice it was and whoever was in charge of the weather did an amazing job because Saturday turned bad again. So we got fortunate and I think that's, I'm glad we're moving back to June. So Pam, you are right. This campus couldn't function without your group of people, no question. They do an incredible job. So everybody can talk about all the things they do, but I'll tell you what, I appreciate classified, they make a big difference. So, and one final thing, Jason, interesting comments tonight. However, you mentioned at the very end about all the positive things that the administration does. And I would love to hear you next month outline all those things because I'd like to know what you think those things are. I would really appreciate, I look forward to that. And that's it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Adams.
And we'll even give you a couple of extra minutes to talk about it. One of the favorite parts of the year is doing the pinning ceremonies. And one, one highlight this year with the respiratory care pinning was that I was told that of the 18 graduates, a great majority of them, if not all of them, have already signed up for our bachelor's program in respiratory therapy. So it's a wonderful addition to our academic programs. And for the board members, three of the five students who got scholarships from the board were at the scholarship breakfast and couldn't be more impressed with their goals, where they're gonna go to school in the future and what their plans are. So we did a good job on getting out those scholarships. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. I want to give a special thank you to Pamela Ford and Patty McClure. Ms. Ford for inviting me and Patty for organizing for me to be on the panel for African-American Women's History Month. It's not often that I get an opportunity to sit in a sister circle and have an honest conversation. It was lovely and I would gladly do it again. So thank you for even thinking of that. The next thing I have to say is, graduation was amazing to me. It's about what we really do. I mean, a degree in airframe manufacturing, man, if I could go back and do it over, I'd try. So you know, just really exciting things happening here at the college. And one of my last comments, I was in the grocery store and I talked to a woman and, Dr. Zellet, I knew you would like to hear this. And I said, she, she actually said to me because I had on the ABC badge and she said, you know, the college is really growing. I drive by and I see the buildings and I want to go back to school, but I'm five years away from my pension, but I'm coming back for that nursing program. I've heard it's one of the best in our area. And I'm thinking, how do we validate that? Can we get like a, something where we can say we're one of the best nursing programs out there? The day before graduation on May 3rd, we went to the Nurses Respiratory Care Radiology. I'm just very proud of the work that this college does. I'm proud for my community and just glad to be here to serve. So our next board meeting is June 10th. We look to see you all. I have not forgot about my hearing impaired. We will continuously work to make our meetings efficient. Thank you.